Doesn't disfavor or favor a protected class or political party. It's on the right-hand side, district should be as compact as possible, which means we really don't want to have some, some long strings of districts moving in certain places. And as part of the work that we've done with the county team, we've really helped in some of those areas to adjust things a little bit more so that there's some more definition to the current districts. As you know, Modoc County, there's a lot of the county that's unpopulated. And so some of these moves were pretty easy to do because there were no populations in those areas that we used to help make the districts a little more compact. District should preserve communities of mutual interest. One of the communities currently within Modoc County is the city of Alturas. And Alturas historically has been broken among at least three districts. And because the reason for that is because as a really one of the sole large population centers within the county, in order to balance the districts, it really has to be split. So that community of interest is still split in these final maps. But it's changed a little bit in each of these maps. The same change happens in each of these final maps, however. And the district should preserve and use existing natural boundaries. And so you'll see that as I transition over to Kate Doran, who's going to share the specifics of these two final maps, map A and map B.
Ken. So just some of this is going to be a recap from the last meeting, but just to kind of refresh and reset what we're thinking of for these boundaries. So we introduced this concept where we're changing some of the the district boundaries where there's really very little population, but it does make the boundaries, you know, follow communities of interest, like school district boundaries, it follows major roads, geographic boundaries, things like that, so that they'll be easier to describe where the district actually is. So this is a map we showed before, even just doing this brought the deviation down a little bit to 15.9%. Still have a little way to go. But we would have, this is district five in the orange, four in the pink, two in the green, one in the blue, and three in the yellow. So it's really kind of cleaning up those boundaries so that they follow these roads. So if you're on, you know, the east side of a certain road, you're in district two. And looking at school district boundaries as well. So these changes didn't really have that much of an effect on population balancing. But we, you know, had solicited feedback as well on how to make these more easy to describe where these are. So just zooming in a little bit, some other areas that were cleaned up along Parker Creek Road and just some blocks that, you know, were the only block on one side of a road or another, just kind of cleaning those up so it's a little easier to describe. So those were just the, you know, overall kind of not population balancing, just kind of making things easier to understand and describe to people. You know, changes that we had made before. So those were in all of the maps last time. So what we're looking at today is final map A and final map B. So based on the feedback that we received, we are looking at a particular configuration in Alturas, which is this brown, you know, square here. We've got our one through five district boundaries kind of all cleaned up and following these roads and school district boundaries. And then we have really the basic difference between final map A and final map B. In A, you would see this kind of part of Canby area being added to district five. And that has kind of a direct connection to district five via roads. And then final map B is this neighborhood that is south of California pines, much more rural and would go from district four to district five. And that would result in, they both result in, you know, deviations lower than 10%. But, you know, contrary to what this arrow is showing you, it would be added to district five. But the way for these folks to get to the district would be to go north to a main road and then over to district five. So not really actually a connection for those folks over there. So those are the two areas, and those are really the only two areas that we could pull population from into district five. So that was what we ended up with for the final maps for this presentation. And I will walk through those areas briefly as well. So the Alturas area is the same in both maps. So to kind of orient yourself to this map, it's pretty well zoomed in, so you can read the street names. The current districts are in this navy blue line. So this is district three down here, four is over here, and two is up here. So this pink area here would be moving from district three into district four. So it's a contiguous area, it's just kind of a scooch that over, take that piece of that, you know, those neighborhoods and add them to district four instead of three. District two doesn't have anything added to it, but it does have an area of district three, which is taken from it, you know, or district two taken from district two and moved into district three. And that was this kind of cleanup south of highway 395. And it continues further east, but it's like that whole area underneath the highway would then be added to district three. So not big changes in the city. And just trying to find areas that are contiguous and make sense. You know, so you could say most of this area under 395 is now part of district three. So this is the area that we're looking at for the city in both cases. So this is what the map would look like overall, final map A. If you chose A, then this is what it would look like. And again, I'm highlighting, this is the piece that is, you know, unique to map A is this kind of little area around Canby moving over to district five that has the right amount of people. And this map, you can see road numbers and you can see, you know, place names and things like that. And kind of identifying some roads that are along those boundaries. So hopefully that allows you to kind of place where these boundaries would be. So that's final map A. A quick look, another way of looking at this, same map. But now we're looking at the colored in areas are what would be the new map for the next 10 years. The existing boundaries are those navy blue lines. And then those hash lines are the change areas. So you can see how much, you know, district four is actually kind of going further to the north and becoming alongside district two. And again, a lot of this area up here has no population. Most of this area has no population. So it was really about making a dividing line that, you know, that you could describe where the edges of those boundaries were. So that's what this area would look like if the new map, if this one was chosen, would be these kind of colored in areas would be what those boundaries would look like. So this particular map would be 5.9% deviation. And I believe you have these have already been sent out in packets as well. But you can see that deviation between the districts is very low. It's not that many people between each of these districts. And the total population by race and ethnicity is listed as well here. And they're all fairly similar between the five districts as well. We also include in your packets, the citizen voting age by race ethnicity per district, which is more used if you're trying to have a majority minority district, which wasn't possible in Modoc County. And compactness measures. They're interesting, they're only really useful if you're kind of trying to decide between, you know, a very compact map and a map that might not look as compact and being able to show the difference between those. But it really just, you know, it's kind of a relative to each other is the, the way to look at those statistics. This is what the final map B would look like. So I'm highlighting this kind of cut out here, which is that California pine, south of California pines neighborhood. Again, it doesn't actually have direct access to 139 as far as any of us knew. And so they would have to come up here to California pines and then come over to district five that way if they needed to do something in district five. So that's this neighborhood here has basically the same number of people as this neighborhood from final map A. Again, Alturas is the same. This is the change area map. So you have this area kind of cut out. A lot of this area down here is also no population. We're really looking at the neighborhood that's in here, moving to district five. Same, you know, basically the same boundaries otherwise, based on those revised district boundaries. In this case, the range is 8.4%. It's still under 10%. So the difference between 5.9 and 8.4 doesn't matter too much. You know, you can see that it's still really well balanced between all of the districts, given how big the county is. So both of these maps do a really good job. And you've got your total population statistics per district in this scenario here. And then the same, and this was also in your packet, the citizen voting age per district, and then compactness measures per district. And I believe they were very similar between the two maps. So, you know, we do calculate them as a matter of course, but, you know, looking between them, they're, they're effectively the same between the two, two maps. All right. So those are the, that's the map presentation. I don't know if we want to pause for questions, Kent, or finish up the presentation?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and finish. I think we still have a couple of slides left. I'll turn it over to Catherine, talk a little bit about, just again, where we are in the timeline. And then talk about how folks can give input, where to find some input to give electronic input, and then we'll stand for questions.
Great. Thanks, Kent. So Kent went over this at the beginning, but I'll just do a quick reminder. We are at the point now where we're getting close. So Kate presented those two draft final public maps. We'll have at least a seven day public comment period on those final maps before there's a vote on them. So definitely eager to hear if there are any public comments on those two final maps. As Kate mentioned, some of the statistics are like pretty equal on them. But we know that folks might have thoughts on differences between the two. So definitely eager to hear. I think if we go to the next slide. Um, great. It says where you can email those public comments to. So there's the email address for you. This will be posted on the website as well. And it also has a date, that public input must be received by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 7th. So again, that is just checking my calendar, that's a week from today. So, um, as we've mentioned before, it really just helps us to know any comments around communities of interest. Any comments you have about maps around how communities are connected in their districts, overall range, are districts contiguous and compact? So definitely happy to hear any comments on those. And then I think with that, we'll turn it back to the board. For comments.
Yeah, so we'll turn it back to Chair Coe. We can certainly go back and, and pull up any of the maps that we've shared if there are questions. Or we can stop our presentation and, thank you.
Okay. Chair Coe is not in a room with us today, so Vice Chair is doing this. And so at this time, I will ask, we're going to debate the merit to the maps under 4A. But if the board has any questions on technicalities of this, before we ask for proponents and opponents, I'll ask. Or if they have any technical questions.
I think maybe it, it may be a technical question, but it may also be not be relevant. But I'm, I am curious on with either of the maps, what the acreage or number of miles within the district will be? Because that has an impact on a supervisor that's trying to support that district. And I don't know that that's a criteria for developing, but I'm curious if you have that statistic.
I have that question put on too.
We know square miles per district. We haven't calculated it, but we could. Just a quick question about that. I know areas like district four looks large. But I believe most of the northern part of district four doesn't have population, although if there was population on the other side of it, obviously that would be, you know, kind of counted. So for, are you thinking square miles, road miles, areas that are not populated excluded, that those kinds of things, we don't have to figure that out right now. But we could definitely get that information. You know, if we had a little more specifics about what you'd like to compare between them.
I'm curious in square miles of the new district boundaries and the number of miles of roads.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can definitely calculate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions from board members on technical items on this? At this time, I'll ask for proponents, those in favor. Is anyone in favor of even if you'd like to testify this time?
Yeah, I'm sure I have two comments to read into the record. Says, "Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on the redistricting process of the Modoc County Board of Supervisors. The purpose of my comment is to provide information about the redistricting of the Modoc County Board of Education and to weigh in on the current draft maps provided in the redistricting public train number three presentation. The Modoc County Board of Education has traditionally adopted the same district boundaries as the Modoc County Board of Supervisors. And that is the direction this current board is moving in. With that, if all possible, the board would like to stay intact. In reviewing the draft maps, there are two that would keep the current board intact, those being draft map A or draft map B. I would ask that you consider either draft map A or draft map B as a new district boundaries for the Modoc County Board of Supervisors, respectfully, Mike Martin, Superintendent." The second one is the Modoc County Farm Bureau. Says, "Comments on Modoc County redistricting proposal to whom it may concern. Modoc County Farm Bureau is a non-governmental, nonprofit voluntary membership organization whose purpose is to protect and promote agricultural interest in Modoc County and find solutions to the problems of the farm, the farm home, and rural communities throughout the responsible stewardship of natural resources. To that end, the Modoc County Farm Bureau submits the following comments on the draft redistricting of the county's supervisory districts. Agriculture is the primary private economic activity in Modoc County. Modoc County Farm Bureau believes that the redistricting of supervisory districts should strive to maintain a resource-based consistency in each of the five districts. Our members, the agricultural community and Modoc County, would be best served by including agriculturally interested voters in each district. It appears to us that map B would do the best job of the above, including all of the west side of Goose Lake and district two would add some agricultural natural resources perspective to a district lacking in that currently. We appreciate your consideration of our concerns. Sincerely, Sean Curtis, Acting President, Treasurer."
Any further proponent want to testify? Okay.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Sorry, it's Stephanie. I am sorry, I can't be there today. I am fighting a bug, so I'm at home. Um, but I am in favor of map A. It geographically makes more sense for whoever the supervisor is, whether it's Supervisor Byrne or anybody else. Doesn't matter where they live, they will have to drive through Canby to get to anywhere else in their district. The other issue I have is when it comes to precincting, we have a big problem with Calpines already because they have so many roads. And some of those have similar road names within their own district and with others already in district four. And some of the issues that it comes up is when we are have an election and we're trying to make our different cards. The one thing that saves us is because those roads are all within the same district. If we have them on the Applegate Trail or the Applegate Road, because they didn't specify, they're still in district four, and so they still get the same ballot. We do not have the election software hooked up to GIS. And I did talk to our software company about that. And we don't have that capability at this time. So if we have to move that area of Calpines over, that has to be done manually. So every single road has to be gone through manually to determine whether it's going to be in four or five within our election software. And that is going to be a big mess. So I'm in favor of map A because I think that'll be an easier cleanup for us as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Dory.
Um, I'm looking at page 38, and it's a little unclear to me on, on, it says final map A, and nothing has really moved there. Right above it, it just looks like it's, it's pointing over towards district five. And it doesn't look like there's anything that actually has changed there. It's already in district five. And then on final map B, and that's kind of a question, but that's, that's what it looks like on the map to me. And on final map B, you have a very small niche of four that's moving over to district five. And before these are approved, I, I really would appreciate the Board of Education and transportation being addressed specifically to note how this is going to affect the school transportation, getting the kids to and from school. Because that has been, been an issue before. So I would like to know how that's going to affect that and pay a little bit of special attention to that. And I would like to see the, the specific, I mean, that, that's it right now.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any further opponents again on these maps? Any further discussion? During then, I will close the public hearing at 10:40 AM and record the time, please. And now we will open our second public hearing, update the quarter fee schedule to comply with the California Department of Public Health P-Change for vital records to commence January 1st, 2022. We'll open this public hearing at 10:41 AM and
Morning, Assistant Recorder Kristen Paul. And the California Department of Public Health has changed some of their fees. We, our county that does not add additional fees on for our vital records, the California Department of Public Health has increased their. And so I think working up $4, you know, that's immersion. And so this is just to give us an inference that that, and just to get this in the timeline, we have to start the new fee on the first.
Okay, is there any questions from the board on this, technical questions? Seeing none, I'll ask proponents, it's hard for her to say, those in favor, do we have anyone in favor who'd like to testify? Any upholders, anyone who's opposed to this who'd like to testify? Hearing none, is there any further discussion? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 10:42 AM. We'll now move on to 3A recorder items. Consideration action, requesting approval of a resolution updating the fee schedule for the recorder's office effective January 1st, 2022. This would just change our fee schedule so to reflect the new. Any questions from the board? From the public? Hearing none. Motion to a group, second. We have a motion in a second and further discussion. And we'll quickly call the roll.
Supervisor Cabasso.
Hi.
Supervisor Coe.
Hi.
Supervisor Rhodes.
Hi.
Supervisor Byrne.
Hi. Would you care, thank you very much. Item four, Board of Supervisors items for A. Consideration action, requesting to select and adopt the final map for supervisory district area boundaries for Modoc County. Is there any further staff report on that, or should we go straight to discussion? Do you have anything, Tiffany?
No, I mean, the only thing that you guys need to consider is that we are going to be having to update the ordinance. And that's inside the county code, once you determine your map. We have put a public notice to fly for the December 2nd issue, so that we'll be ready to do that on December 14th, start the first hearing. And one of the things I do notice within the code is they do not actually list the district boundaries in the code. So we could actually change that code to say established by resolution. So that may help us so that we can keep that code a little shorter.
Okay, anything to add, Chester? Okay, questions, comments, Elizabeth?
My first comment is, I, I think it's still unfortunate in my eyes to see the line between district five and four falling illegal. The township range and section now, and Jerry and I have talked about this before, where sometimes it fires. And we're trying to figure out which side of the line the fire is on. And so I, I would prefer an easily identifiable, identifiable feature like a road maybe going around Clear Lake or something versus a township range and section. My second comment is, I understand it's unfortunate that Supervisor in district five would have to travel farther to get into that, that piece of ground in Calpines. And I think that's the nature of living in a large county that has a limited road structure to all parts of the county. And we've got dispersed small communities. So it's just something that we live with in our town. And then my final comment is, I, I hear what Stephanie is saying about the impact to the voting in our county. However, I am more motivated by trying to have a balanced, balanced resource-based districts. And I think that for me drives my, my interest in working with these maps.
Supervisor Coe, do you have anything?
I would just say that the map B is, in my mind, the only one that complies with the, the musts and the shoulds of the redistricting process. And keeping the community of Canby intact. And I think that is, is critical in, in nature as we move forward on this. And as Supervisor Cabasso has already indicated, it's unfortunate that some of the travel times will be increased to get around in a district. But we all went into this knowing that we, our districts are huge and oftentimes not easy to get from point A to P, point B within the district itself. So that are my thoughts at this point.
Thank you. And my thoughts at this point is, although last night, I prefer A, after thinking about it, I think B makes more sense. And I understand where Stephanie is coming from. But, and my original thought was, well, it's easier with driving. But I already have to go to day, which I have to go through two counties to get to. So I guess that's not really an issue. And I think keeping resource-based issues, I think Parker makes a good argument, keeping resource-based issues in each district is more important than the inconvenience of having to manually move voters for me to have to drive a little farther to get to my constituents or vice versa. So changing my mindset, my thinking, I agree with the sound like the rest of the supervisors. Better for our constituents in our county. Any discussions from the public? Oh, Ned, you have your hand up. Did you just not take it down?
No, I was prepared to make a motion. The chair is ready.
All right, if there's no further discussion, go ahead.
I would move that the Modoc County Board of Supervisor districts follow the draft map B.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just a question of clarification. They mentioned that we have to wait seven days before we approve this. So do you want to make that motion that we set it for the next meeting at December 14th, for map A? To be approved at that time, or excuse me, map B to be approved at that time?
So the item says requesting to select and adopt the final map.
Correct. That was at the direction of the chair. We weren't sure at that time whether we needed that on the agenda or if we needed it for the next meeting. But from the presentation by flow, it says we need a public comment period prior to the vote.
So Margaret, what's our, what should we do here legally?
So again, my only concern is that we get this for at least a first reading by the 15th. So I really do leave it to your pleasure and from your coordination, how you want to do it.
So would the motion be to move map B forward as our selection at this time, and then we adopted it?
Yes, yes. So you, yeah, you can adopt it at this time. Because again, we would need to do it, but we need to do it by ordinance, since we have done it prior by ordinance. We'd either have to amend the ordinance or rescind the ordinance and drop it by resolution. So it's just, it's direction to staff to bring forward option B at the next meeting.
Would it be possible?
Sorry.
Right.
Would it be possible to have the first reading on the 7th, so you can have your second reading and adoption on the 14th? Because I can't start my 28-day period until after you do your second reading.
So I'll, I'll double check this, Stephanie, but the, the AG did come out with a decision right when all the problems were arising with timing. You know, when we didn't know when to get our census numbers, that for the purpose of moving forward, the first reading is all that's needed for the state to believe your compliance with the adoption of an ordinance. for the state to believe your compliance with the adoption of an ordinance. I mean, the ordinance. So I'll double check that. But, but from a perspective of timeline, a legal perspective, the seventh and the fourteenth are absolutely fine.
So does the maker of the motion want to change her motion to concur with what County Council just suggested?
Yes.
I can concur, yeah, okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing, remember the quick, please call the roll.
Supervisor Rhodes?
Aye.
Supervisor Cabasso?
Aye.
Supervisor Coe?
Aye.
Supervisor Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. We'll let you guys work out logistics behind the scenes. Thank you, thanks everyone for your input. Okay, four B, consideration action discussion and determination on the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three county of Modoc. But follow these.
Justice Robertson from Administration. So we bring in this issue before you is, we have some conflicting language historically.